Test, test.
Well, I guess I wanted the easy way and just want somebody to tell me, okay, this is what you should take. You know, is here the best deal?
The key thing is Medicare.
Is what?
Medicare.
Yeah.
Medicare.
Well, that's probably where I would have.
You know, I have, I've got.
Yeah.
I heard you talking about that this morning.
So that's important. Well, when you get by, you never think those.
Yeah, I had some advisor call me a few minutes ago and start explaining things and I'm going now, okay, now what company are you really?
Yeah, that's right.
But you gotta learn this.
I had a real good friend that, I mean, that's, that's what he just loved to do, figure all that stuff out.
Yeah.
And then he talked to my language.
Yeah.
You, you wasn't talking the PhD language, you talked to my language. I just don't understand what he was saying.
So I don't know if today's gonna work for us, but we need to do.
But that factor wasn't.
Good morning, how are you, Charlie?
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
You got a lot of things in here.
Yeah.
You're gonna get rid of the gum, I am. All right, it is 9:00 AM. I will call the weekly meeting of the Cunningham County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. And we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. I believe it would be Commissioner Van Duzen's turn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just for everyone's awareness, if you have a cellphone, if you would just silence it, please. If you need to take a call, just step out. We also are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two on the agenda, call for public comment. We will still take calls from the public on items that are not on the agenda for information only. Those two numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297. And we will do that during the open part of our meeting. Conflict of interest items, item number three on the agenda. Is there any for any of the commissioners?
Nope.
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the November 24th, 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, that motion carries. Do we have anyone on Zoom today? Doesn't look like it.
I think, I think Luke's gonna join us.
Luke will be on during the flat part, okay.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, item number five, action to approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, that motion carries. Monthly reports. Neither of our individuals are here. The sheriff gave his, was that off on one of his weeks?
That was in September or October.
I thought he gave it later. Okay. Well, we'll just wait, then we'll move on, and then if they come, we'll just grab them when they get in here. Item number seven, action to approve the purchase of a mobile radio. Well, that, we probably need.
I don't have any information other than what's in your packet, so you might wanna just go to.
Okay, here we go. They're both here. All right.
He didn't want to speed getting down.
We'll start with emergency manager with our monthly report, Jamie. Good morning.
Notes on the phone.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Been a busy month with COVID testing and things like that. We continue to attend meetings with our unified command, our county partners and our state partners. And the only logistical need I had this month was for a local nursing home with some germicidal wipes for a nursing facility. We continue to sit in on COVID vaccination plans with the Department of Health and our state counterparts. Those things are still looking to be channeled through the healthcare providers and pharmacies. They've laid out about a 64-page plan on the Department of Health side. Attended, let's see, we held an operation in Watertown recently with the November 16th and 15th and 16th with the partnership of the National Guard, Department of Health, and the contracted medical staff, locally yielding about 670 total participants that registered for that event last Sunday and Monday. We provided command posts and such for logistical support only. They had contracted medical staff that they provided, which was in attendance for both days of those. That resulted in a total of, out of the 670 registered, 570 tests were administered, 597 kits were used, and I will have no results of the COVID positives or anything of that nature. They were able to provide 91 people that couldn't have printers for the vouchers as they attended, and they did have 52 people that did pull up unregistered, which was also provided. We were literally logistical support for that. And along with that, our state regional coordinator had Hamlin County and myself head to Madison, South Dakota, to participate in theirs with some logistical support as well as command posts.
Jamie, I have a question. So of 670 participants, only 570 tests were administered. So how does that, what happened? Like with that number?
Those were the people who didn't show.
Oh.
There was 670, 570.
That were registered?
Yep.
Okay, got you.
And it was a self-administered test. Took about roughly 10 minutes, start to finish. We created about four different lanes for the folks at the guard center there, at the Bernie Edwards Center. Um, we provided, um, let's see, this week, this month. Sorry, I'm kind of in that layer. Well, we also held our yearly hazmat awareness training on the Lake Area Technical College campus, November 6th and 20th. In attendance was roughly 40 students both of those days. We did hold our last LEPC meeting for the year on November 10th. We assisted our auditor's office with our general lecturing polling places within the county. And FEMA and the South Dakota OEM office also had a flood risk review meeting on November 2nd. And I'll be working with Luke from First District on the flood planning. They're just revising and very preliminary at this point, just making you aware that there's probably is some things coming up with Luke and myself as far as what gets revisited, if it's added or taken away as far as the floodplain management within the county. I attended a National Weather Service virtual meeting last week, which looks like our 90-day forecast continues to be La Niña pattern. They're kind of forecasting any additional snow amounts and things that we have will be in the forms of Alberta Clipper style, as it sits right now. We are still in the out monitor, still stays at abnormally low, which is a D zero on their rating. And I will continue to work with them as far as risk, as far as fires concerned. I'm still researching on our burn ban that we currently have, and I will be working with other county OEMs and fire chiefs for further information. Most of them agreed with me. All of us in agreement that our current plan is working, and we just continually work on it on a weekly basis right now, but I plan on doing a lot more research on some of that and sitting down with some of those and seeing what we can advise for changes. There is a, if you haven't received it already, I'm not sure when that comes out, but First District Todd K's also sending out our pre-disaster mitigation grant process that will need to be signed along with all of our counties, so I'll be in attendance with some of those folks as well. Any questions?
So can you describe the floodplain thing again? Was that, so is that a USGS?
USGS FEMA and the state.
Just to see if that's changed.
Correct.
And how often do we do that? Like every 10 or 20 years?
I don't think that's an annual one, if I remember right. I'd have to contact the OEM office at the state with Mark Macy out there.
I'm just curious.
They revisit it. I'm gonna say about every.
That's what, that would think something like.
If I remember correctly, on how that read.
Commissioner Gable, can you hear me?
Luke Muller on the floodplain management side for us will be.
Okay.
Advisor on that. And I think he plans on maybe, we'll tag it together and approach the commissioners.
Yeah.
If there's any proposed changes.
Right.
Jamie, I know it's probably early on this, but has there been any talk about the vaccine point of distribution and how that's gonna be handled?
One of those as well, a Department of Health meeting that still only yielded, that we're looking probably towards the end of December. The last I kind of heard, you know, but that thing changes daily. I see we have three, three liters of vaccination process all with that 90% effectiveness category. But in the, in the three-phase plan, they're still initially looking at first-line people, healthcare, long-term, some EMS, and then there's a phase two and those other.
Elderly.
Prior prioritized folks and elderly. And then phase three would end up being the public. But anywhere, that forecast, the way it sounded, was anywhere between March and June, to be honest. That's the last report that I've heard.
I heard that there was 20 million vaccines that were gonna be dispensed by Pfizer by the end of the year, and then another organization that had eight billion, you know, it's just, I mean, it's just different numbers all over the place. You don't know what to believe.
And it updates daily, it seems to.
I was wondering if there was any talk about locally how that was gonna be handled when it became available.
Primarily, it's gonna be probably through the healthcare provider and pharmacies.
Okay.
On, you know, whatever. They did a preliminary survey, and I want to say five to 6,000 doses possibly come into the state. And what we get out of that, maybe a thousand on the first go around.
Yeah, okay.
And then, and that'll hit our front line folks first, and then.
It's like throwing a dart at a dartboard. I get it, but I'm just trying to stay on top.
Hopefully it'll come like in the end, the nick of time here before the end of the year, and we can move forward as everybody is exhausted.
Jamie, are they talking about having another drive-through testing?
Not locally here, but you still can do that, I believe, at Hybe.
Oh, yes.
At our local pharmacy. That is an open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday by appointment, which is that more non-invasive, I believe. It's just the smaller test kit. Three-to-five day turnaround on results.
And, you know, I've been told there's a difference between like the, I forget, the different types of tests. The one administered at the drive-through at the readiness center, was that the antigen test or was that the other one?
No, just, just a rapid test.
The one that looks at the DNA of the virus as opposed to, except I understand that they have a different rate of, you know, accuracy.
Yep.
So, a pretty, pretty significant difference.
And I believe most are 80% accuracy, from what I've understood.
Well, yeah, I guess I shouldn't get in. Yeah, I don't know, but I.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Oh, so we do have, you know, this on number 11 to adopt resolution to ban open burning. Your recommendation this week would be?
I say we stay with the weekly situation. Moisture today is very minimal, but we're still abnormally dry today. We're in a low category for the next two days.
So we should be fine to just leave it where we're at?
We'll be all right. We'll come in next Tuesday. This weekend looks to be some winds after Thanksgiving and some warmer temperatures, maybe upper 40s, low 50s in some areas. But our area that's looking at the, the weekly climate, fire, grassland danger map shows us in a low category.
Okay.
That could change from Saturday maybe to a moderate. As it sits right now, we're sitting home.
Doing all right.
Hopefully we get some moisture.
And the deer are moving.
Yes, they are.
Had a chance for three of them already this morning, the ones that haven't been hit by cars.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, next we'll move on with the sheriff, with Brad.
Morning.
Good morning, Brad.
How's it going today?
Good.
Good.
How about with you?
Good. Glad the temperature's a little warmer than.
Yeah, 35. Hope it stays there.
Right.
Or up.
All right, we'll get started on the monthly balance sheet here. Monthly balance sheet for the end of October 20 was $10,000 and $10,064.50. Copy fees collected were $24, and sheriff's fees collected $9,026. And warrant fees collected were $425. We're a grand total of $9,475. Over to the next page there. These guys are pulled up on the big screen already. For the month of October, Sheriff's Office responded to 620 cases and calls for service. 24 accident reports were completed. You can see, talking about the deer, they've jumped up considerably already. November, there's gonna be a lot more as well, so. Warrants served were 76, civil papers served were 194, and transport miles, 3,391, for a total of 14 transports and 17 people that were transported. Jump down to the middle of the screen there. Our average daily population in the jail for October was 43.68. Our high ADP was 50, and that was on the 29th. And the low ADP was 37, and that was on the first of the month. If you jump on down, you'll see the SCRAM there for October. We had 20 participants on the SCRAM bracelet, 35 people on the twice-weekly PBT using that new kiosk that we put in. I think it's actually jumped up a little bit since then. We're at 52 people on the twice-weekly UAs and seven people on the sweat patch in a total of 189 bookings for the month of October.
How's your new kiosk working now?
It's working really great. The, the people that are on the program, the 24/7 participants, they actually like it too, because they can come in, they don't have to wait for staff. If we're having a booking, you know, they can continue doing their booking, and they can come in, PBT, and they're on their way. Been able to not have participants having to talk and work with staff, so we're able to eliminate the COVID fears and everything with that, so. It's been, been working great, so. And we're over our 21, our 21 was the break-even amount, and so we're at 35, 36 here. So we're back to making a little bit.
Into a cost save.
Yep.
Brad, previous to COVID, how many people were typically on that program?
On the PBTs? Anywhere from 55 to 65 would be an average number. There's still a lot that are supposed to be on there, but it takes a little bit for the courts to kind of get back in and contact some of these people and tell them they need to start being on their PBTs, so that number will continue to rise as, as time goes on and the courts kind of get back in, so.
Yeah, you can look at the light green columns on the graph, you know, you can see it's, you know, 30s, 40s, then 50s, so gradually, but those were mostly UAs and patches and SCRAM bracelets, that's how I guess until you get the.
I see just, yeah, for instance, or you can look back in October of 19, we're at 64. November was 51, 55, so 55 to that 65 range is kind of an average number for the.
Do we need to fix the graph? Does graph not adding it right? Am I looking at the right thing?
Up here on the.
On the two times daily PBT?
Yeah, maybe we need to add that better. I'll check the.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but, okay.
So, all right, we'll jump on down to the bottom of the screen there. You'll see we collected $6,251.18 in out-of-county contracts. Work release fees are still $0, because we don't have the work release program up and going yet. Because of COVID, 24/7 fees, we collected $5,158, and SCRAM fees, we collected $2,435. And any questions on that? We'll jump on, just got a couple topics here I wanted to share with you guys. Remember last month with voting and everything going on, really busy time in the courthouse. I want to give kudos to Dave, our security guy, just to share some of the numbers that kind of came through the courthouse and the court security there. For October, there was 11,875 people that went through the courthouse there. And just to kind of give you a few numbers going a few months back, we're at 7,845 for September and 6,700 and 6,900 for August and July, and that number stays pretty steady. 68, 6900 from the months prior, so. So you jumped up from 6,900 to about 11,875, that's a.
Well, doubled it.
A doubled it. He was extremely busy, so he did a fantastic job of getting people in and through. It's definitely slowed back down, and he's kind of taken a sigh of relief, so it's been good.
We had what, voting?
Voting and taxes, yes.
And we had license plates, all, all on the end, they were all going on in the end of October.
Yep, it's, definitely it was a busy, busy month.
You know, and, and the interesting part of it is, is prior to us establishing that security site, I heard a lot of grumblings. And I haven't, I have not heard anything really. I could honestly say I haven't had anybody really complaining. You know what? I give a lot of credit to Dave. Dave really handles it very, very well.
He does an excellent job.
He does, he does, he doesn't embarrass anybody, you know, and.
Having the right person in that spot.
Yep.
Is a key, key to that position and that, everything he does, so. I'd say kudos to Dave again, doing a fantastic job in security there.
I think people now are just, just know that that's what they have to do when they come into the courthouse. We've hit that point.
Takes about a year. People have been in there once, and they start to remember, oh, that's right, I gotta.
His formal training is serving, is serving us very well.
Absolutely, yep.
And it's not too cumbersome to do it, so.
Yep. It's working.
And Cindy feels a lot more secure, right?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
We do. Dave's pretty reliable, very reliable.
And he's right here in the building. He has had to escort a few people out, and there has been some issues, but having Dave right there, being able to react and deal with those has been, been awesome, been great, so.
Yeah, the, the security cameras, monitoring them was a very advantageous deal.
Yep.
For us.
Yep. Little COVID updates. The kiosk is working great in jail. Like you say, you've seen the numbers there, 35, 36 people. Been working really good. We've got our computer set up in there, so we're in our ITV room with the Zoom capabilities and a camera. So we've been able to resume our church, our AA, and our NA, and doing some of that via Zoom with our inmates now. That's recorded, and so our pastors and everything, we can bring that back in. So that's a good thing, really important thing. Looking at doing, possibly looking at doing commissary in the jail. Commissary is where inmates would have the opportunity to buy snacks if they don't like the deodorant or the shampoo or the materials that we use. They can buy something through commissary. There would be snacks, and there would be things that Sheriff's Office would set as a priority that you can or can't have in the facility. So a lot of different options there. That would be a moneymaker for the county. My goal would be to take those funds and possibly put those back into some jail programs. We always talk about programs and being able to rehabilitate, get these people back on the street again. Program space is kind of tough. We don't have a lot of program space. We have an ITV room, which is being used about 98% of the time, it seems like, with church and ITV and courts and just everything that's happening. So there's some programs out there through this commissary where you can essentially have like an iPad or iPhone type thing, really in a protective case. They're meant for jails. A lot of facilities has been doing this over the last four or five years, and you can have the programs built right into that, so inmates will be able to work at their own pace on that iPad. Like, say, this could be another disciplinary tool if we have an issue with an inmate, if there's a fight, or if there's things that are coming and going out of the facility that aren't supposed to be happening. That'd be a tool that we could pull back and, you know, cut off in the commissary. So those are some things that we're just kind of looking at, possibly going forward with here in the future. The preliminary stages of looking at amounts and how, how it works with the facility. I don't want to put an overburden on the staff. I want to make sure that we can still operate effectively. So those are just some of the, some of the things that we're looking at possibly.
If I can just comment, Madam Chair, when we were touring jails before, before the vote in 2017, most of them had commissaries. So it's kind of like, it's not an unusual thing.
Actually, like I say, I'm active in the South Dakota Sheriff's and the National Sheriff's Association, and when you talk to another sheriff, they say, what do you do for commissary? And you say, we don't do commissary. You get that look of, how do you get by not doing commissary? That's kind of an industry standard nowadays. So that is something that we're looking at doing. Like you say, you know, everybody asks why, why give an inmate more, more snacks or something? Have that opportunity, while a full inmate's a happy inmate. That makes it much easier for staff to work with that, so.
That's right.
It's not supposed to be that happy.
And sometimes if they get rewarded for doing good behavior, that's incentive for them to.
There are a lot of facilities who use that as a disciplinary action. If they have an inmate, like say, with an assault or anything, any action that they're not listening and doing what they're supposed to, they can deactivate their commissary, and they can't have that, so. Everybody wants their commissary. One other little bit of advice here, Kristi Gast, I'd like to share that now, that she's gonna be retiring after 37 years of working for the county. She's worked for eight different sheriffs. So at the end of the year, she'll be retiring and be looking to fill some, probably be some movement around in the facility here.
Big shoes.
Big shoes to fill with Kristi leaving. She's.
Figure took place.
Absolutely. She, she has been a staple of the Sheriff's Office for, like I say, the last 37 years. She's worked for eight different sheriffs and kind of been, been through the system, so.
How many, how many years did you say she?
37 years.
Yep, that's, and she knows, she knows the business. She's, she's the one who keeps track of all your, your data, and so.
She works through data, and she works on her checking account. She's, she's, so. When you guys see her, wish her, wish her well. I don't know how.
So when does she plan on pulling the pin?
End of the year, here.
End of the year.
Yep. Yep, she's been sharing that with me. We've been in discussions for quite some time on that. So wish her well on her, her ventures here coming up. And lastly, you'll see some Christmas lights and some decorating going on in the jail and the Sheriff's Office there. One little kind of fun thing that we're doing in-house is a little competition between the correctional officers and the deputies to see who can decorate their outside of the building and their lobby the best. And what we're planning on doing is having all the county courthouse staff and commissioners do a vote on what side decorated a little bit better. It's been a really good morale booster, and everybody's been really excited about it, and there's a lot of people that are really diving in and.
I think the commissioners will have to take a neutral stance on that. I noticed the sign out by the, the jail.
Yep.
By the, at Maple and, and Second there, so.
Yep.
That's good.
So like I said last night, I know the deputies, when they were off, they were, they came in and they were decorating. You'll probably see some of the Christmas lights when you came in today. They're getting more, and they plan on doing a little bit bigger, more elaborate display here.
What's the deadline to have it done?
What I kind of figured is we do an anonymous voting. Usually the treasurer's office or equalization office, they have their Christmas party every year. I figured that'd be a good time for all the county employees to be able to take a vote, so it's all anonymous, everybody shows up to. I figured that'd be a good time for all the county employees to be able to take a vote, so it's all anonymous. Everybody shows up to the Christmas party, have an opportunity to.
They can throw their ballots in the box out back in the courthouse.
Well, we do only one vote per, we can't vote twice, so we try to get some kind of a system.
No call-ins.
No call-ins.
Who would?
No absentee voting.
No absentee.
Good work.
Yep, sounds good.
I'll keep up the good work.
Pre-registration.
Did they help?
All right. Does anybody have any other questions for Brad? We will handle item number seven while you're here. I'm guessing you have information on that, actually to approve the purchase of a mobile radio for the detention center.
It is what it is. Looking to spend three thousand and five dollars so we can upgrade our digital radio in the detention center. End of twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere in here, the state is going to jump to their new P-25 compliance, and this old digital radio will not be able to work. Analog will still work. Over the last four, five years, we've been upgrading our radios in the cars, the vehicles. Our handheld digital radios, police department, highway patrol, the whole state has been upgrading and working on that, so. This is one of the last ones that still needs to be upgraded is.
This is our base unit?
This would be a base unit, yep, so they could talk to highway patrol.
I'll make a motion to approve that purchase.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. Any further discussion?
Is that coming, what word, what line does that come out of?
Think it's coming out of supplies.
Okay.
It is a budgeted item for this year.
Perfect.
Good.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brad.
Give you the call.
All right, we will move on then to item number eight, action to approve a notice to bidders for a rip wrap, and I believe Rick is here to. Give us some information besides what was in your packet.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Rick.
This is.
Rick, just get close to the mic.
Just turn that one on, maybe shut that one off then, so it doesn't, there you go.
Yeah, just get close to it so we can hear you. You're one, you're one of the guys that we have a hard time hearing.
That's good. For you. All right, this is a notice to bidder for rip wrap on County Road Eight-One by Stink Lake and Four-One by Kings Lake. This is. Where we built up due to high water this spring. We need to get rip wrap on it to secure that. Some of it's already washed with the winds that we've had lately. It's just, it's not bad, but we'll get in there and fix it before. Anything gets, goes to bed, so.
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen. Any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
That's it.
Um, okay, we'll move on to item number nine, action to declare printers from treasurer's office surplus to be destroyed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second it.
All right, motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Something that we typically do, so. Nothing too much out of the ordinary. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. I don't see, is Luke?
Yeah, Luke is on, I believe.
Okay, I just don't see it, so.
Yeah, you can't, it's such on.
Okay, that's fine. All right, Luke, we're on to item number ten, action to approve the Carlson second edition plat resolution. If you would. Want to give us that information first.
Here, I am here. I will.
I'm putting it up on the screen, Luke, if you're wondering.
Certainly do that while.
There he is.
Come on, Luke.
Good morning.
Oh, you're muted.
Am I? Yeah, yeah. Oh, I know why.
We are very good lip readers.
Here, you're muting yourself.
Let's try this again. Can you hear me now or no? No? Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Emphasize your words and we'll read your lips.
You can hear us, I can see him smiling with.
Let's, uh. Um, let me try, I hear.
You might have to, it might be your microphone settings on your, um. On your Zoom, on Zoom.
Got to mash the right button.
Well, there's a little, sometimes, sometimes you can switch the microphone on Zoom, Luke.
Yeah, let's try. Can you hear me here?
Can't hear you.
No? Let's try.
Do you guys, you guys were at the zoning meeting, can you?
Looks pretty, pretty relaxed. Yeah, we were at the, the zoning meeting.
Do you want to do a call-in? We, it, no, it's, we would have to call him if we want him to be on the speakerphone, and we.
Yep.
Will need his phone number, which we will not disclose publicly.
Just put it up on the screen.
I have it, okay. Cell phone or office phone? Probably cell, okay. Just trying to figure out where he is. Oh, gosh, show it to you, Sydney. It sounds good.
We're calling you, Luke.
Okay, Steve says he can hear Luke.
Steve.
So I don't know what's going on.
Who says?
Steve Hollenraph, I don't know where he's listening at. His office.
Well.
Is he sitting next door?
Yeah.
Well, we don't lose sign language.
Let me.
Okay.
I don't either.
Yeah, everybody else can hear. We'll see. Well, that's weird. Everybody else can.
I can certainly hear you now.
Ah, I can hear you, Luke. Good morning, Luke.
Good morning, Luke.
Good morning.
Can hear you very well.
That explains why you wouldn't listen to me when I was talking to you during the emergency manager.
Well, you were pretty quiet.
Yeah. Okay, I am ready if you are.
Yes, we are ready.
All right, well, we have the, uh, today we've got the plat of Carlson's addition. Sorry, Carlson's second addition in the Northeast Quarter Section Six in Lake Township. This is northwest of Watertown. Uh, on Highway Twenty is where this property is located. Lee, if you want to scroll down just to touch on this one, and that's just gives you an idea. Northwest on the diagonal on Highway Twenty, right where, I believe that's Four Forty-Ninth intersects there. It's right on the top of the hill there. We always call it Robin's Hill from where I was. That's what we used to call it. Anyway, uh, next slide, I'll just show you what's going on here. The, the blue lines on here, or aqua, whatever you want to call them, that's what the new plat's going to look like. The orange lines indicate what the existing plat is. So what the Carlsons are doing is just replating over the top of this jigsaw puzzle piece plat. That was approved here probably fifteen years ago, and they're just going to level this out. If I remember right, the, the sizes here, somewhere in the neighborhood of. Eighty-five acres and forty acres of each of those pieces there, uh, plus or minus, so that gives you an idea. And then if you take a look at the next slide, I'll just show you the presentate, or the plat itself. This is just lines on paper, but it gives you an idea of what it looks like. The. There is one small change from when this went to the Planning Commission, and it's, it's almost not even noticeable. But on Highway Twenty before, there was no access shown. I shouldn't say that. There is no access shown on Highway Twenty, but if you look right, almost in the middle of the, of the plat itself, it says the center line of existing access. There is a field approach there, and it sounds like what had happened is that the DOT did allow them to keep that approach. But you can see a dotted line there, so there's a forty-foot access easement that goes back to Lot B on the south. So that is the only thing that's different. It doesn't change anything physically, other than it allows that Lot B, that south lot. To go up to that field approach, which honestly was a really good idea. I just didn't think that DOT had let them keep that. There is a hill there, but they let them keep that, so. All is well. Planning Commission recommended approval here going on a couple of months ago already.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Luke, did you want to add then what you were wanting to talk about before when you?
Yeah, yeah, I just thought that, I heard the question about, uh. Uh, about the updates to the discovery maps, the floodplain maps, and I had promised Jamie to be on when he talked about that, and I was on, I just, you couldn't hear me. Um, but the, uh, the thing is, here, I'm going to send this here. Okay, if you let me share my screen, I'm just going to make sure I can, I'm just going to go ahead and put, oh, good, I can. Uh, right here, and there we go. All right, so if you can see on here. This, this map that you see on the screen here. To answer the question that Commissioner Gable had, how often do they do this? They do it whenever Congress feels like it's a decent idea, or better yet, whenever the administration feels like it's a good idea. That has coincided somewhere in the neighborhood, as was said before, between twelve and fifteen years. We had one in, I believe, eighty-six. And then had a long gap until two thousand nine, and then this one is scheduled probably to have. Some formal review and adoption somewhere next year is what the expectation is. Now, they've been working on this for a couple of years. And honestly, I've lost track of how many iterations there are, but one of the things that has been put together, and, and we've had this on our, on our website. But again, they've updated this map a few times, but basically what you see on the screen here, on the left side, as I swipe it back and forth. On the left side is what we have today for the whole county, and of course, you lose a lot of detail as you're at the county scale. But as I go back to the right, you can see that, um, this is how, sorry, left to right, whatever, as I leave the right side of the screen. You can see that these are the areas as they've updated it. Probably from the county resident standpoint, the, the biggest area change. Is that FEMA had never mapped the area of the former reservation before, and now they have. The basis of this data is LiDAR data that was collected. Going on about five years ago, maybe six. LiDAR is, is, the best way I can describe it is about the same way as a fish graph works. When you're on top of the lake and you're just shooting down and finding, that's basically how LiDAR works. And so they've got more detailed data down to the sub-inch level, so less than an inch. So they thought, hey, let's remap this, so that's what they've done, and so we've got that data out there, so. Commissioners, I'll suggest, um, you know, if, if there's a property or an individual that's interested, wondering. Hey, what the heck's going on? You need to direct them to me, or else just ask me the question. I'll show you the area. We, I am working with FEMA to get this on our website. It's been a bit of a slow and steady journey on that, but we will get to that. The last, I guess, the main component that I'll tell you as floodplain administrator, one of the hats I get to wear for the county. Is whenever I get someone call for a building permit, and I think that anybody who's in an area like this will attest to it. What I've been doing is pulling this up and reviewing it. Of course, the last six months, I haven't shown it with them sitting beside me, but generally what I'll do is I'll show them a before and after picture. We're not regulating to this yet because it hasn't been adopted. However, it's kind of, it's best available data. So what I'm telling people is just be advised, if you have, if you have a property that isn't in the floodplain now, or at least isn't mapped in it. But maybe this would be the time probably to look at purchasing flood insurance because it would be cheaper, or to start, you know, getting yourself ready for finding. Some information. That said, it's not imminent, and the county does have the ability to look at, maybe contest some things if they think that the drainage is wrong. I will tell you, and looking at it, it's, I think it's going to be an uphill battle, and they have refined it down quite a bit. If I showed you what it looked like originally versus now, um, yeah, it's, it's been pared down quite a bit, so. Anyway, that's the, that is a little bit more in a dime tour of what's going on with that.
Good information.
Thank you, Luke, for that update.
Thank you all, and thanks for calling.
Thanks.
All right, bye, bye.
Have a glitch in our system that everybody. All right, so we pretty much discussed nine, item number eleven already, that we will not enact the burn ban this week with the recommendation from our emergency manager. Uh, item number twelve, actually, approve claims for payment. The claims we have to pay today are November salary claims totaling five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and sixty-nine cents. Motion by Gable. Second by Van Duzen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Oh, sorry, we do have more claims. Credit card ones? Yeah, credit card ones, I forgot about those, and the nine-one-one payments to the city. So we have credit card payment to Visa Relia Bank. For supplies for the auditor's office, State's Attorney's Office, and Register of Deeds totaling three hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. We have a Visa Relia Bank, uh, payment for the sheriff's office for miscellaneous travel for one thousand ninety-five dollars and ninety-six cents. And for the emergency management office for miscellaneous supplies, two Visa Relia Banks for three hundred and thirty dollars and forty-four cents. And our monthly nine-one-one surcharge payment, these are for September collections. Paid to the city of Watertown for twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-four cents. All right, whichever way we go here. Any other additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Um, item number thirteen, we have any. Nothing. COVID practices. Oh, sorry. Uh, how about item number fourteen, action. Nothing for fourteen. How about personnel changes? We have a few of them. Um, personnel changes, these are anniversary step increase for Lisa Felch in the State's Attorney's Office. She's a legal secretary. She'll go to step seven, eighteen sixty-four an hour. Jamie Monson is due a anniversary step increase in the State's Attorney's Office. She is a criminal civil records manager. And she'll go to step six, twenty-two fifty-seven an hour. Kayla Showmaker is a correctional officer, do an anniversary step increase to step seven, twenty-two oh-two per hour. Sherry Howell is a secretary in the emergency management office. She'd do an anniversary step increase. She is going to step eleven, nineteen seventy-seven per hour.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any. Comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. We have no travel requests? Nope. How about public notices, possible form of commissioners? Have anything that anyone can think of?
Nothing.
All right. How about all business? Any all business?
Just a real quick mention. Um, so yesterday we had the, the first kind of meeting. As part of the compensation study, so Natalie arranged it with Dr. McGrath and Elena, I forget her last name, so one of her consultants. So it was going to be probably working with us directly throughout most of the compensation study. Cindy and then Commissioner Waterman and I sat in. So it was basically just kind of, it was an initial meeting. It was kind of, it wasn't really specific, but just kind of hearing out. All that's going on in the county to help the, the consultants kind of get a, get a good sense of things. I have to say that without Cindy, we would have been lost. I mean, the, the wellspring of knowledge that you are, it was quite, quite impressive. I couldn't, I couldn't keep up, but anyway. So it was, so that's, that's underway, so. And the, the next set of meetings will be. Aimed at department heads. Again, I'll be, this is by Zoom, by the way. That will be on, let's see, Monday and Tuesday of next week, so try to hit as many department heads as possible to get a sense. So right now, we're in the phase where we're going to be asking of the departments and the employees to fill out some, some paperwork so that they can have a, you know, a baseline set of information. So they can get going. Once that's done, then our part, most of the work for, for our end is done, and then, then it's up to the consultants to, to map it all out for us, so.
That's what they use for the comparisons, then basically.
So, no, that's more about duty descriptions and making sure they have a good idea of what people are doing, which does, yeah, which does fit into the comparables. We did talk a little bit about comparable jurisdictions. You know, mostly other, other, you know, we, mostly other counties and cities, you know, especially the counties that are a similar size, and so there aren't, there aren't a lot. We will try to look at maybe some private sector comparisons, but that's a little harder to get because that's not a, that's not always public information, so. So it sometimes just depends on if the, if a company or whatever wants. So it, sometimes it just depends on if the, if a company or whatever wants to provide the information then. So that's kind of, but that gives us a, the more you can flesh it out, the more you're going to have a good idea of how, say, both compensation, you know, both what people get paid, salaries and wages. And benefits, how that all compares to, you know, other counties, other governments, um, other local governments as well as, um, to the private sector. So that's, and that's what we want.
Thanks. She certainly impressed me with multiple ways that she looks at things.
Yeah, yeah.
From her past experiences and, uh.
Yeah.
The input we give her and she brought up several suggestions, didn't you agree?
Yeah.
And Natalie, do you have any questions?
So, and by the way, it's, so a lot of this is kind of Natalie's, Natalie's helping coordinate. Um, well, she is coordinating pretty much all the, all the information that the county has and making sure she gets it. Organized in a way that the consultant can use it. So did you want to add anything? Yeah, that was a good meeting. It was good. Yeah, very interesting meeting, so.
I can't, I'm just going to reiterate what you said, Lee, uh, without you being there, Cindy, it would have been much more difficult time. Your, your years of longevity are.
Okay, that, that is a positive.
Ten years if you're better than courthouse.
That's right.
Memory. All right. Well, thank you guys for getting that kickoff done and moving on. Um, how about item number nineteen, new business? We have any? Anything for the open?
Just FYI, I'm sure, um, yesterday morning, we had a clerk meeting. So that's catastrophic people expense reimbursement program. So there was one county, there was a, a case in, uh. Lincoln County that had to be dealt with. And these, again, these, if it's a murder trial or a rape trial, these costs counties a lot of money. And so this was.
We're glad we have it.
Yeah, this was over, I think, I want to say it was about one hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars was the cost so far for Lincoln County for this one. So just to give people an idea.
Probably one other, uh, thing for the open. I think you all probably received the email and reference to the, that capsule. That's going to be held out at the extension center.
Yeah.
I want to be absolutely honest with you. I, I didn't really think about it. I mean, I've been out there, been working with people out there, but I, I didn't know that it was coming. So it's pretty short notice to do anything and. And I'm assuming, you should never assume anything, but I'm assuming that they have it in hand and.
I haven't heard of it, so.
I know the, uh, the mayor asked, uh, that, uh, we would, uh, cancel it. But, uh, that's coming up already this Saturday and there are.
She was asking for a recommendation, wasn't she?
She was asking for a recommendation, yeah.
I, um, called and talked to Becky. It is pretty short notice to cancel something like that, especially with, uh, Thanksgiving. You know, we have all our signs up there, recommendations. We don't have, you know, as far as the current county goes, any like numbers of limiting people to certain events. But we have our sign out there, the big one that we put out, um, you know, recommending masks, hand sanitizing, social distancing, all those sorts of things. And that's kind of what we've done all summer with, you know, anytime there's been auction sales as well. So it will be the same protocol and.
Plus, plus the fact that we've all gotten a little bit more. Used to this, the, the absolute paranoia has probably gone away a little bit, but everybody is automatically kind of social distancing. More aware, a lot more aware of the situation.
And the thing is, is these, um, the animals that are shown are, uh, kept in their trailers. They're not in the, um, barn itself. They come in and they prep them in there and of course they use a show ring, but as far, and it's a one day event. So they're kept in their trailers. They're not in the barns. So I don't know if that's any reassurance for.
Really want to see a, a zoo go out there Saturday afternoon, look at, you know, they'll bring in a thirty-five, forty-five foot, uh, gooseneck trailer with one calf in it, you know? And, and I, uh, a few years ago, we had such a mess out there, we had to just, uh, send the police out there to kind of sort things out so we could, uh, keep a fire lane open.
And we had a, we had a problem with, uh, there was ice practice at the same time as the cat show and parking was an issue out there.
Other problem is that parking lot needs to be striped. When I was out there for the election, I couldn't tell where the no parking area was. That parking lot needs to be striped. I don't know whose responsibility that is, but the, the parking lines.
The county's parking lot?
I don't know.
The county removes snow from it.
There's a, we, we have, yeah, we have to go back and look at the, uh.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. Definitely the parking lot needs to be striped.
I'll have to talk to Steve about that. He's got an input on that.
So in other words, the show will go on.
Show will go on.
Yep.
Just, uh, take precautions to protect yourself or, you know, I mean, how many times have you heard it? You know, I, we're getting tired of saying it, but, uh, if you don't feel comfortable, don't go to the show.
Right.
And, um.
And they come from all over the country. I mean, it's all over the United States. I mean.
The show is on the twenty-eighth, which is in four days.
Yep.
Well, if you look around, when you're driving around town, just yesterday I seen license plates, Texas, Colorado, Minnesota, Iowa. I mean, we got these people already. They've been here camping all summer. You know, we've had people from out of state that have been in our communities. So anyway, okay.
Just for the record, the, I believe that the mayor's email, just to clarify what you said, wasn't asking for us to cancel the event. She was looking for some guidance since it's a county-owned building on how we wanted to proceed with it. So just to clarify.
Sound corrected.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, that's kind of what we've had, just social distancing, wear masks, hand sanitizing. We do not have any limitations of numbers of individuals that can attend events, so.
Did you see the reports? I think it was on Killaland this morning. They did a study on contact surfaces. Pretty interesting on, on where COVID is, is laying in wait basically on surfaces. So it was interesting.
Bubble suits next.
Do not, do not back off on sanitizing your facilities, basically.
Yeah, the biggest thing is hand washing. They've been saying that from the beginning. Hand washing is very crucial, so. Okay, um, anything else for the open?
What, um, there is a, uh, a Zoom meeting concerning the, that, um, Chris Jacobson from SDAC Center. I guess it's in conjunction with the municipal league. But it's to bring local governments up to speed about possible effects of the amendment A and IM twenty-six for local governments. I think it's going to affect cities a bit more than counties. But I, you know, I, I'm going to try to listen to it. It's at two o'clock today.
So we should do it here because there's limited?
Yeah, if we want to participate, so it's.
Two o'clock.
Yeah, so I'd like.
So there could be a quorum of commissioners at that, I guess. But yeah, because they said it's limited, so.
To a hundred connections, so a hundred participants. So I think that.
You're going to want to log in sooner rather, I mean, early.
Get it going earlier.
To make sure you get in.
Okay, I'll show up here, but come back about one thirty-ish.
I plan on attending that as well.
It's at two, two central time and if, I'll come back at one thirty if that doesn't work.
Back of lunch.
All right, so then there might be a quorum of commissioners at that if other commissioners want to join in on that as well. Um, okay, anything else? We do have a need for executive session, one personnel and the other contracts. Okay. Look for a motion to go into executive session.
Hold on.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Uh, I don't know if there'll be any outcomes afterwards. Um, more likely not, so. The one item possibly, but okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are in executive session.